7:01 and good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July regular monthly meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I would ask if Shannon, if you would call the roll.
Certainly. Carrie Callahan.
Here.
John Carrier.
Here.
Ron Llewellyn. Ron is not here. Sarah Nadeem notified us she will not be in attendance. Rob Phillips notified us he will not be in attendance. John Schoenhorn.
Here.
John Brockelman.
Here.
Harry Marsh.
Here.
And Steve Walsh.
Here.
Is with us online. Thank you.
And.
Oh, yeah, your microphones, gentlemen, are going to have to be right so we can write up in your face. And that's the way it's being picked up on the recording as well. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. So I'm going to start by having the secretary read the legal notice for tonight's meeting, please.
Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will hold an online and in-person hybrid public hearing on Monday, July 19th, 2021 at 7:00 PM on the following applications. Ed Carollo, application for variance to locate accessory structure in other than required yard at 41 Eli Road, R80 Zone. Raymond Zakara, application for variance to locate pool and other than required yard at 80 Woodruff Road, R20 Zone. Ryan and Crystal Haran, application for variance to reduce rear yard setback from 25 feet to 12 feet for eight-foot by 12-foot addition to rear of house located at 6 Carrington Lane, R20 Cluster Zone. David Kurnuck, application for variance to exceed the maximum area of 75% to 220% of the habitable area of the principal dwelling for construction of a 32-foot by 60-foot garage and for height in excess of 15 feet for property located at 751 New Britain Avenue, R20 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the town of Farmington's website at www.farmington-CT.org/about-us/calender-meetings. A copy of this proposable is available online at www.farmington-CT.org/government/zoningboardofappeals or by calling the planning department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325 dated at Farmington, Connecticut, July 1, 2021.
And we will be calling the matters in the order in which they were just read. But as a preliminary matter, and I've mentioned this to a couple of members, one of the notices that was published in the Hartford Current inaccurately listed the title of our board as the Farmington Historic District Commission. The body of that notice was absolutely correct, but because the title was incorrect, I had raised that as a possible issue. We talked to the land use attorney for the town. It's a close question, but as chair, I'm going to rule that the notice substantially complied with the requirements for this meeting so that we can proceed. However, if any one applicant feels that they want to take the chance or do not want to take the chance that someone will challenge it, we will entertain a motion for adjournment. But as chair, making this ruling, it's subject to if anybody wants to reverse or seek to overturn my decision, I'll open it up to members both online and present. And if, I'll just open it up for any comment of just now for the commissioners. Does anybody?
I think the determination is appropriate.
Okay. So because we're three of the regular members of the board are not here tonight, I'm going to appoint Commissioner Marsh, alternate Commissioner Marsh, to vote on behalf of Commissioner Llewellyn. Alternate Commissioner Brockelman will be voting for Commissioner Nadeem, who's absent, and Commissioner Walsh will vote on behalf of Commissioner Phillips, who is absent. So all three alternates, two are present, one is available by online, will be voting as full members of the commission this evening. So we have a full complement of six commissioners. So we're going to start with the first item on the agenda, which is Ed Carollo's application for variance.
Excuse me, Chair. The first item on the agenda is Dave Stromberg.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the continuation from the June meeting.
I apologize.
So I apologize. Yes, so there's one addition in addition to what the legal notice was. So Mr. Stromberg's item was on the legal notice that was written at the last meeting, and we continued it.
Okay. And I'll note, we opened the hearing for Mr. Stromberg and then continued it to tonight's meeting. So it is legally, and it's in the notice, and it's on the agenda. So although it wasn't on the legal notice, again, we will proceed since we started it and adjourned it to tonight's meeting. I will find that that was adequate notice for purposes of the matter being heard tonight. So whoever is going to be speaking on behalf of Mr. Stromberg's application, please come forward either to the table or to the podium. I think both are right equally.
You can go to the podium, Mr. Stromberg.
Okay. And please, before you speak, identify yourself for the record and your address. And please indicate what your relationship is to the applicant here.
David Stromberg, H. Chaffey Lane, Unionville, Connecticut. And my wife and I put in the request for the variance.
All right. Please proceed.
I'll explain what you would like to do.
Oh, okay. Essentially, we want to add 14 feet to the front of our house to put an addition on, taking the existing garage space, turn that into living space, and then extend the garage so we still have a two-car garage. And then we also want to put a front porch across the front of the house. So there's an issue with the setback from the road and setback in side yard.
Do you have anybody? Well, let me just now open it up to members of the commission and start with Commissioner Callahan. Any questions?
Just if you could clarify, Mr. Stromberg, what's the claim of substantial hardship for the variances? Does it have to do with the topography or shape of the lot?
Well, if, right, our lot is kind of, it's more pie-shaped, so it kind of gets smaller as you go towards the back. It's also higher in the front and in the back. So if we were to go off the back, we'd need to put in a full foundation. And we also wouldn't be able to do some of the work we want to do inside the house with the front hallway and adding a pantry off the kitchen. So to accomplish our goals, really going off the front was the, was our best option. And then the front porch is mainly just the, you know, something we want. We think it'd dress up the house and look nice.
Commissioner Carrier.
So the, looking at the map here, two questions. It looks like the house is right up against wetlands as well in the back. Is that correct?
That whole, looking at a wetman, wetlands map, that whole street was wetlands, Chaffey Lane, and they filled it in. And, you know, the neighbors' yards are in the wetlands, and they've all put additions on their houses as well, and swimming pools and what have you. So you'd have to go probably 300 feet from our house to where there's maybe existing wetlands now.
Okay. And the porch is within the setback, the way it looks, just the variance is strictly for the corner of the garage. Is that correct?
I think the porch on one side is.
On one corner.
Two feet.
No further questions. Commissioner Marsh.
No questions.
Commissioner Brockelman.
No questions.
Commissioner Walsh.
No questions.
And as chair, I have no questions. Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on behalf of the applicant? Hearing, is there anyone on Zoom? Shannon?
If there's anyone on Zoom that would like to speak regarding this application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom.
And while they're doing that, Shannon, could I just ask you, are there members of the public that appear to be online participating in this meeting?
We've got four, three of them are perhaps calling regarding an application matter.
Okay.
So.
Is there anyone raising their digital hand?
Again, if anyone wants to speak in favor or in opposition of this application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and you will be called upon to share your comments. And Mr. Chair, do you want to note for the record, there were three letters of support that were included with the application?
Yes, and I'll just state for the record, those letters are from a Heidi Stein, Philip Saita, S-I-U-T-A, and I can't read the handwriting, but it, 6 Chaffey Lane, Mary, I can't read the last name. Can you just?
Pickering.
Pickering?
Pickering.
Pickering. Okay. We have those, they're part of the record. All right. Do you want to comment further?
No.
All right. So with all the, anyone who had, wanted to speak, having had the opportunity to do so, I'm going to now close the public hearing, and we're going to go directly to discussion. So you can have a seat. All right. I'll entertain a motion for this particular application.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for variance to reduce the front yard setback from 40 feet to 33.5 feet and reduce the side yard setback from 10 foot slash 30 feet to 10 foot slash 28 feet for the addition to a home at 8 Chaffey Lane, R30 OS Zone.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All right.
The minimal, you know, request and seeing that the neighbors right around the property are in favor of it, I don't see any issue with it.
The variances are minimal, the neighbors support it, and the topography of the lot and the presence of wetlands, I think, provide sufficient hardship for the granting of the variance.
I did a drive-by. It's clear the others had, as the applicant had mentioned, had put additions on and that. With the way it comes out, I think it'll be fine.
I'm with you.
All right. And Mr. Walsh, do you want to comment from the?
I have nothing to add.
Sorry?
I have nothing to add. I agree with what has been said.
And as chair, I'll just, I go last. I did do a site inspection over the weekend, and it does fit within the neighborhood. These corner lots are always more difficult because of the double setback. It does not alter the neighborhood in any way. It fits within it, and I think there is sufficient hardship because of the wetlands that are pretty close up to the property. So I'm ready to, if anybody has any, nobody else on the commission has any further comment, then I'll call the question. I'm going to ask Shannon if you would read the roll, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Hi.
Commissioner Carrier.
Hi.
Commissioner Brockelman.
Hi.
Commissioner Marsh.
Yeah, hi.
Commissioner Walsh.
Hi.
And Chair Schoenhorn.
Hi.
Thank you.
Congratulations. The application has been approved, and you will get further information from the town staff on how to proceed from here. Paperwork has to be prepared, but, all right. We're going to move on to the next matter, that is, the one I mistakenly thought was the first based on the notice. So Ed Carollo, application for variance to locate accessory structure in other than required yard at 49 Eli Road. And I would ask the applicant to come forward and state your name and address for the record and your relation to the applicant.
Yes. Good evening to everyone. Ed Carollo from 39 and 41 Eli Road. We own both properties. So I'm asking for a, to try to build accessory building in front of 41 Eli Road in order to keep all our equipment to maintain the land. The building is located, it will be located 160 feet from the road, 164 feet from the road. Here on the drawing, I noticed that they, we placed 30 feet of side yard, but I will be willing to increase that, or I'll be willing to do it at 40 feet of side yard instead. There's enough land, so there is no problem with that. We tried to look at all the locations to see where was the best place to place that building, and we wanted to keep it, we didn't want to attach it to the house, which will be closer to the ridge line. I also had a suburban sanitation come and determine where the existing septic leaching fields are, and they are right there at the entrance, you know, to the front. So the only accessible place to place that proposed barn is where it's located, where it can be located right now or where it's on the drawing. That main reason why we want to build it is because we have a lot of land in that area. We own the lots around it. All the lots total now are on 16.5 acres, and we want to keep it the same way. We've been maintaining that area like that for the past 30 years. I currently live at 39 Eli Road, and I will be moving to 41 Eli Road in the future. So I want to make sure that we can move all the equipment that we have on 39 Eli Road to 41 Eli Road. If you look at it, there is the satellite picture. You can see that it's all wooded, you know, 164 feet from Eli Road is going to be located. I did take some pictures from there in May and also in the wintertime, and it's very hard even to see the road and the houses across the street. It's really well hidden. It will be hidden, it will be painted the same way as a light brown, same way as the color of the trees. That's how most of the property, all the houses there are painted too. It'll be the same color. I think I said everything.
Mr. Chair, I did want to alert you that Commissioner Llewellyn joined us, and he joined at the start. He's heard the entire discussion for 41 Eli. He sent me a notice on the, on Zoom. So he's joined via Zoom.
Okay. So I did appoint Commissioner, alternate Commissioner Marsh for Commissioner Llewellyn, and that would mean that for purposes of this hearing, we'll have, you know, everybody gets a chance to ask questions, but then Commissioner Llewellyn will vote as a commissioner in this matter. All right? All right. So is there anything else you wanted to add?
I think I have almost everything there.
You all set?
Almost set.
All right. So let's just go then in order. Commissioner Callahan, you have any questions?
I do. Are there currently houses both on 39 and 41 Eli Road?
There are.
Okay.
They are on the map. That's 39. That's where I live.
I can't see it that well from here.
39 is near the street.
39 is near the street.
That's visible.
Right, okay. And are both of those homes currently occupied?
Right, they are.
Okay.
Who occupies it?
That was a question. Are there family members in both houses?
They're all family members.
Okay. And the combined lots, of how many acres are they comprised?
I'll tell you the story. We used to have all 40 acres, which goes from the lot west of 41 all the way down to Eli Road. And we kept them wooded for over 40 years. But then when my father-in-law passed away, he divided the land between his son and my wife. Now, his son was here up until 10 years ago. Tried to keep, you know, all the lots wooded the same way, but he moved out, so he decided to sell. So that's, those are the five lots that you see now being built between Eli Road and Old Mountain Road.
Okay. And is the reason that a shed or barn cannot be placed behind the house at 41 Eli Road, is it the presence of the ridge line?
Yes.
That's all the questions I have.
Commissioner Carrier.
No further questions.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
No questions.
Commissioner Marsh.
No questions.
Commissioner Brockelman.
No questions.
Commissioner Walsh.
No questions.
I have a few. I went out there, but you have these rather large dogs greeting people right at the driveway entrance, and I, they were wagging their tails, but they're very loud, so I didn't want to venture up the driveway. I could not tell from the street where this particular barn, in fact, I couldn't see 41. I mean, 39 is the front.
Right, you cannot see them. And it's very hard. If you go right there, where I placed two stakes to take pictures, it's very hard to see.
And as I understand it, though, at least in the winter, the barn will be located across from, there's a house directly across the street. I can't remember if that's 38 or 40. But they have a big swimming, around swimming pool that you can see when you're going up Eli. They're on the right side, you're on the left, on the ridge side, right? Will they be able to see this barn based on its height or its location based on the number of trees you're going to take?
They, it's even hard for them to see my house because of all the trees that we got, and we are, the garage is 30 feet from the road of 39.
Okay.
And this barn is going to be 160 feet from the road.
Now, the image that you presented here, there's an architectural, like, image that you submitted as part of the plan. Is this exactly what the barn is going to look like? It's going to have sort of sliding barn doors that go, that's that picture. Is that what we're?
No, it's going to be similar to that. I didn't want to spend the money on the architect doing a full design that if we were not approved. But the idea of the barn is going to be just like that, similar.
And I note, again, I don't know if the background is supposed to be the area to look like the landscaping around there, but it appears that this will be clearly visible from along the ridge line to the valley below. Is that accurate?
It's not very, here, the drawing doesn't show you the trees, but if you go to a satellite picture, you can try to see it's, I'm going to take the least amount of trees that, that will allow me in order to build. It's going to be all surrounded by trees. I like the trees. That's what we're.
And the reason I'm asking is because we, let me be clear, from, let's say, the Polo Grounds, you can see 41 Eli, right? It's kind of a flatter, lower, like a one-level.
Right.
House, right? And is the barn, as you're looking up to the ridge, are you going to see the barn to the, to the left of that house or not? And is it?
41 is around maybe 70 feet from the ridge. It was built 1960s, I think. And then there's still going to be around 200 feet, even more from the ridge up to the barn. There are trees, the trees are huge. They're going to be double the size, double the height of the barn. The trees are there right now.
Well, the trees that are between, going to be between the barn and the ridge?
And 41.
Oh, between, well, okay. There's going to be trees between 41 and where the barn is.
There are.
And those trees are already there now?
Yeah, they're huge.
And that's saying, I was on, I didn't want to take my chances of driving into the driveway because of the two dogs that are very big dogs.
I'm happy to show you anytime.
Well, you know, I don't want to go on if nobody's there to let me in, so.
No, you won't, I promise you, you won't even see anything from 40, 41, you see it. And if you notice from all the houses, I mean, it's a very, very low roof. I mean, you can see it from the Polo Grounds, but it's not something that shows. We like to keep it, you know, noticeable or.
Well, in the GIS image, the satellite image that's up there, are you able to point to the, is there a, either Shannon or can you just point to exactly where the barn is going to go? I see 41. Of course, yeah. This make, if you speak, you're not near a microphone. That's the only thing.
It is a touchscreen.
They can't, we won't be able to pick you up, so just. All right. So in terms of, can you?
That's approximately 160. It's different, the map that was submitted said 113.
113 feet from the road or from the ridge?
From the, from the property line, from the front property line to where, so from the ridge line, the ridge line is at the back of the property. So from the back of the property forward to the approximate area. So that's your three.
Mr. Pro, you need to be near a microphone, or we won't be able to pick you up from any, but, you know, maybe if we're going to ask you questions.
When we did the first drawing, I thought we had sent a revised one. But when we did the first drawing, the architect placed 113. So then I went to the property and I placed a stake to try to get it away from the road more, and that's when we placed a stake and we measured, and he measured 164 feet.
All right. So I'm going to be clear then, the distance from the road is not, is going to be an additional 51 feet further from the road. So it would be setback 51 feet further than the original plan, is that what you said?
Where the barn starts, right, the first wall.
And the, the dimensions of the barn again are what?
The dimensions are 50 by 25.
And because you're, it's the thinner side of the barn, the width is going to be facing the road, correct? Or is it going to be?
Facing the road.
The narrower portion of the barn.
Yes. I can see that on the map.
Yeah, I see that. Okay. All right. And are you taking down any of those large trees to build this barn?
I'm taking only whatever we need. I don't know, we place a foundation, maybe five, five feet around them, the least amount of trees. There will, we'll use a small machinery to get in there to be, you know, for the foundation, and then.
How far back, Shannon, is this from the ridge line protection line, from the actual protection portion? The reason I'm asking is because of.
Yeah, I don't know the ridge line setbacks off the top of my head, so I've got to look it up.
My only concern is when I hear the minimal amount of trees possible, you know, there's a, there's an old folk song that that reminds me of, but.
It's around 70. It's around 70 feet, I think, the ridge line protection.
Is 70 feet?
70 feet.
From where your, the other end, the end of the barn is?
It's 70 feet from the ridge to where you can build a house.
Right. And where is this barn in relation to?
It's going to be around 310 feet.
Oh, 310 from the ridge.
She has, she has measured it out.
Oh, okay.
So, Mr. Chair, the ridge line setback area is defined, it says. It says a line that is parallel and placed horizontal distance 150 feet off the lesser slope side, typically the more wooded side of all trap, trap rock ridge lines is defined herein. And the lowest contour line created where less than 50% of the slope added to horizontal distance exists for a distance of 50 feet, which is typically at the toe of the slope. So in this case, it'd be the top, and so it'd be 150 feet back. And I believe, I gotta go to the other, I gotta go to the other view. So this, it's a little, just so we're clear here. This brown line at the back of the property is the approximated ridgeline that has been entered in onto the town's GIS and is shown. You can see it all the way, all the way through. And that was based on aerial topography that was available at the time that this line was set. And then we evaluate for new homes with a on-the-ground survey. In this case, I'm gonna put the aerial back on so we can have some basis for measurement. But that brown line is still there. It's just, it's about 10 feet off the back of the concrete for the pool. And if I measure from the line back up, it's approximately this clearing area that Mr. Correlo pointed out as the location. This is measuring 330 feet from the ridgeline to that location. So at 150-foot setback, he's obviously well outside of that.
And, and so my inquiry then to you, Shannon, is whether or not we can condition this on not removing those and some of those large trees that act, seem to act as a buffer between the ridgeline and where Mr. Correlo proposes to place his barn.
I believe that would be appropriate and, and to perhaps have them staked prior to removal for staff to review. And then if we think there's an issue, then we can always come back, then it allows an opportunity for a review.
And, and Mr. Correlo, you would have no objection if that was a stipulation as part of this application?
Nope.
Okay. Shannon, are there any rules against tree removal outside of that 150-foot? If, let's say, he just wanted to clear an area, not build a structure. Because what we're asking, or what Mr. Correlo is asking is a, is, you know, to be on the, you know, on the front side of the house, it's got variance because there's no other place to put it.
Correct.
Is there conditions that exist within planning and zoning that would not allow or would require approval to remove trees?
Once you're outside the 150 feet, I don't believe so. This is one of those regulations that you've got to read each time because we don't use them every day. So just bear with me for a second. Everything that's being referenced is activities that are in the ridgeline setback area. So once you're outside that 150 feet, it does not appear that anything is regulated.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
There is statutory requirements about views, though, correct? Aren't there, doesn't the state law? I, I've just raised it because we're talking about.
But if you want, I, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. Of course, if you, if I knew you were gonna ask that, I could have looked it up today. But I, yeah, I don't, I don't know the intricacies of the Connecticut general statutes with respect to the ridgeline.
Does anyone here have any other questions? Mr. Marsh?
Yes, two questions, two thoughts. Number one, what are you gonna use the barn for?
He said what he's using it for.
Farm equipment. We have tractor, we brush hog, the lower field.
It's irrelevant.
Yeah, we have lawn mowers, all farm equipment.
Okay. How are these different things going to move from the barn to where they have to go? Are you gonna have to build a road?
It's gonna be a gravel road. I'm not gonna place any black tap or anything like that. Small, doesn't have to be big.
Well, it depends upon the size of your tractor.
Excuse me?
Depends upon the size of your car.
Oh, it's not too big. It's a 4310.
Any other questions, Commissioners Llewellyn or Walsh from the, from online? Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Walsh, I don't have any questions.
I just like, I just like clarification that any gravel road or access is really outside of our purveyance. Isn't that right, Shannon?
So the driveway connection can be the material of his choice.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so is there anything you want to add before I ask for people who have any comments, either in favor or against? You wanna?
No, I think that there are a lot of structures closer to the road than the barn that we are asking for. And then, you know, we'll move it from, you know, 40 feet from the side yard, from the sideline, like any primary house that it could be approved in any of the lots.
Somebody commenting that wishes to play something on the record? I hear someone speaking. I don't know. I guess, I guess not. Does anyone here wish to speak either in favor, well, let's do in favor first, of the application? Any hands raised or anyone present who wishes to speak on it?
If anyone has called in online that wishes to speak in favor of this application at 41 Eli Road, please raise your hand using the Zoom function and you will be acknowledged to address the board.
Anyone then opposed? Wish to speak against the application?
Anyone online that wishes to speak in opposition to this application at 41 Eli Road? Or anyone present that is here can come to the podium and speak if you have any questions or comments regarding this application.
No response?
No.
Okay, then I'll close the hearing.
Yes, there's no one, no one has their hand raised online and it appears no one has come forth in the, in the audience.
All right, I'll entertain a motion from a member of the commission on 41 Eli Road.
I'll make the motion. I make a motion that we approve Ed K. Correlo, application for variance to locate accessory structure and other than required yard at 41 Eli Road, R80 Zone. I'll second.
Question of whether you would entertain a friendly amendment to require that, that before any of the mature trees are removed, that they be staked and that staff determine whether or not they are required to be remain or not.
I would absolutely entertain that, yep.
I would not. You, you will not? All right.
And I'm, well, are we at the discussion point?
Well, we, well, we're in discussion without the amendments, so we can. I'm gonna, I'm gonna amend the, I'm gonna, I'm going to ask for the amendment to include that before any mature trees are removed in that area of the construction that the, that those trees be marked and give the staff the opportunity to determine whether they're necessary to remove. And it's my understanding that Mr. Commissioner Brockelman is in favor. Does anyone offer a, a second to my amendment?
I do.
All right, so, well, you're not, you're not seated, you're not sitting for this.
Vote, yeah, he's not sitting to vote.
Oh, okay.
So. So is that, does anyone wish to second my amended motion? All right, then my motion does not pass, so we're back to the original motion, all right?
And discussion purposes, the reason is, I'm not sure that the amendment, my concern is it would place the staff in an untenable position because if Mr., outside the ridgeline area, if the property owner, if Mr. Correlo wants to go out and cut the trees down, he can cut down whatever trees he wants, as far as I can see. But with the understanding that he doesn't want to cut down those trees. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to keeping the trees as a buffer as much as possible around the barn. It's just, I don't think we can have the staff go out and say, you can't take down, or you can take down that tree. They can't.
Yeah, when they can, he can regularly do it anyway if he wants to.
That's my concern, is I understand it, the trees, the gravel road, they can, Mr. Correlo can put those in without a variance without any further input from the town. So I think, I just think we have to vote on the straight whether or not it can go in the front, in front of the house because it's, the lot doesn't allow for it to go behind the house because of the ridgeline.
And I'll just respond to that, that I know that in occasion where we've approved larger parking lots than are necessary, we've included a requirement of either arborvitae or fence or something that's not required, but we've made that a condition of the approval of a var, of a variance. So that's why I proposed it. It's not required. But in terms of limiting the possible exposure to the views because of the height of the barn, as opposed to the footprint of the barn, that's why I proposed it, so, but.
I don't, I don't disagree with the concept. I'm just concerned about any kind of mechanism of enforcement as opposed to arborvitae's have to be put in. If a tree is, and here's my concern, if a tree is marked for removal, and I don't know what the town staff is supposed to do because it can't stop the property owner from removing that tree. I don't want to see the trees go either, but.
I don't want to see them go either.
So, so can I weigh in for a second, please?
Trees, I just don't want to create a condition that can't be enforced. So the reason for not, for not doing that is that, again, if we go back and simplify this, Mr. Correlo has the right to take those trees down if he wanted to. He could have took them down before he came here tonight. So putting a restriction on him on what he can take down in the meantime with that. But then he could walk 50 feet up the road or up his driveway and cut those trees down because they're not right next to the barn. It's arbitrary. So the fact is, is that we're sitting here, we're looking at an application and, and any structure that Mr. Correlo wants to put in is either in the ridgeback setback or it's in, in the front of the house, which is in the wrong yard. That being said, there's literally nothing he can do without approval from one side or the other. And in my eyes, that's a hardship of the ridgeline and that protection. And the fact that he's plus 100 feet from the road and 300 feet from the setback, I think that in looking at this, and in my expertise in, in land planning and, and building, this is the best possible location that he could put it. And it's not a, you know, a gigantic structure of any means for, for what exists on Eli Road.
Commissioner Llewellyn, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, in the simplest rules of what we have, trees and what they use to make the road between aren't in our purveyance. I mean, and you can ask Shannon that, they truly aren't in our purveyance.
Well, I'll, I'll respond to that. That is true, except for the fact that applicant is coming here asking that they be excused from following the, the regulations of the town, the plant, and the planning ordinances and regulations. Therefore, we can require certain conditions as part of that variance, regardless of whether trees or bushes are part of our, are, is under our auspices separate from that. That's the, the point.
Okay, then I would, I would tell the applicant to go cut his trees down and come see us in 30 days.
I understand your point, Commissioner Llewellyn. So is there?
All I have to say, sir.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right, Commissioner Brockelman?
No comments.
Commissioner Walsh?
No comments.
All right, and I, I said what I was gonna say already, so. Are we ready to call a question?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
All right, this is the original motion by Commissioner Brockelman, seconded by Commissioner Carrier. All in favor?
Are we roll call?
A roll call.
I can do a roll call, absolutely. Commissioner Callahan?
Aye.
Carrier?
Aye.
Llewellyn? Commissioner Llewellyn, we're calling the vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Brockelman?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And Chair Schoenhorn?
Aye. So the application has been approved, so you'll hear from staff and there are procedures that have to be followed, and good luck with your barn.
Great, thank you very much.
And hope you, your dogs enjoy it as well. All right, moving on to the next matter, Raymond Zakara, application for a pool outside of required yard at 80 Woodruff Road. Would you please identify yourself and your address for the record and your relationship to the applicant?
Okay, Raymond Zakara, 80 Woodruff Road, and I go by Lou, middle name. And I am the owner with my wife, Shemane, of the property. I guess by way of background on the property, we were here two years ago and requested a special exception for a garage in the front of the property with living space above, and it exceeded the 30, was a 30%, I guess, overall square footage. And that was approved, and I know I want to put the pictures up there, but we've received numerous compliments. It was, there were absolutely no objections from the neighborhood and that was the before, and there's the after. So they were very pleased with the work that was done. So we're here before you tonight because we'd like to put an in-ground pool in, and a 12-by-16 cabana. The need for the variance is a result of where the house was placed originally back in the 50s and it's to the left rear of the property. There's, well, there's 20, there's 46 feet from the back of the house to the building line. And with a 25-foot setback, that would leave 21 feet of usable space and then 10 feet from the house would permit us to put an 11-foot wide pool in. And I guess aesthetically, it wouldn't be very pleasing, nor do we believe it would be the, I guess, the best use of the property considering we've got 66-plus feet from the house to the property line along Ridgeview. So what we're requesting, in, instead of asking for a variance to the setback which would encroach on the neighbor on Ridgewood there, we would like to put the pool at the 40-foot building line along Ridgeview and also within the 25-foot setback to the rear. So the pool would be within the building line and we'd 10 feet away from the house, and it's kind of a modified kidney. But it would not be to the rear, what's the wording? The longest wall to the rear of the house. And being a corner lot, I guess, you can cut it in half and technically it should be in that area there. So what we're requesting is instead of, you know, a boundary line, again, that would push it to the back. And I have had discussions with Jen on Ridgeview, who, she totally supports it. And, you know, we'd rather not push it backwards and keep it within the building lines that are there. And that's, well, and I guess, as you know, a pool is really customary use of a backyard and that any noise, from a noise standpoint, it's no different than having kids in a backyard or adults having a gathering or a cookout. I tried to get the decibel readings on a fuel pump and they don't, they don't have them, but I'm, they tell themselves, it's a variable speed pump. speed pump, and it says it's extremely quiet, so I'm fairly confident that it's going to be within your 51 dB and 46 dB, you know, daytime, nighttime requirements, and I do have a decibel meter, so if anyone wants a meter, so if you wanted to see the readings, I'd be more than happy to check that once it's installed. Also, I guess, I don't know how, the relevance, probably not, but to minimize the invasiveness during the construction, we're going to take 10 feet of the persythia off the side of Ridgeview and have the construction equipment come in from the side, instead of bringing it in through Woodruff Road, and, you know, it's not going to look very nice if they go across our front yard, and then post-construction, we'll either replant the persythia or build a cedar shadowbox fence, but we'll put it back so it's not visible from the street. So that's, right. There's that, the persythia, that's a template, pool company came out and laid out, and that is sitting within the, there's a stake to the front corner there, you can see there's over to the left.
You have any other, is that, are you done with your presentation?
Yes.
Right, so I'm going to turn to Commissioner Callahan, any questions?
So where this, I guess I'll call it a template, the, the blue?
Yep.
Tarp, it's behind the house.
It's, no, it's.
Because I, I went and took a look at the house from Woodruff Road.
Yep.
And the addition that you put in with variance or special exception a couple of years ago?
Yep.
Is to the right of what would have been the main house built, whatever, back in the 50s.
To the left.
To the left, yeah. I think you could probably see from the first picture.
Oh, yeah, if, that's true too, if, there's a picture from the street.
Oh, so the new addition was on the front?
Yeah, the new addition's on the front, front left where the garages are.
But the, okay. That's, that's Ridgeview or Ridgewood over?
No.
To the right?
To the right is Ridgeview.
As you face the front of your house.
Correct, so there's a new addition there to the left.
Okay, and where, we have an objection, I wrote down the names, Miller and Thomas, I didn't write down the first names, but where is their residence in relation to yours?
I can show, hang on a sec.
I know that, I know it's on Ridgeview.
Number 28, yeah.
So they're 27?
27.
Across the street?
Directly across the street, that's what I thought.
Well, not direct, no.
It's not directly, no.
That's the.
So 84 is directly across, and 27 is across and down one.
Okay.
So the house in question, here's the subject property.
Can you show it again?
The, the pool would be here, and the, there's.
Oh, yeah.
From the pool, we get a pool, 40-foot line.
Give me a sec. What? What's between the pool, the proposed pool, and Woodruff?
Well, all of this.
What's all of this? I can't see from here.
I'm sorry, the whole property is bordered by the surface. So, yeah, from the, all the way down Ridgeview and across the front, Woodruff, it's all persythia, and then there's another row of persythia to the right side of the house, and I guess behind this persythia, so.
Okay.
Nothing is visible, and then when we moved in with 2017, we put a white stockade fence up that ends somewhere here, if you have a dog, and.
Right, and there's landscaping in front of that fence, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I saw that, okay.
Yeah, well, and, well, the backside, yeah, so, and then what we, what we're going to do in all of this, that whole perimeter has a wire fence in the persythia, but we're going to erect a, I think that, I have pictures of the whole fence, there's going to be a fence, this whole area.
Okay.
I'm just going to brief for the record, because I don't know if that got picked up on the microphone, so Mr. Zakara was using the aerial map on the screen to indicate where the persythia is located on his property, and it fronts on Woodruff and then along Ridgeview, and there is a hedgerow of persythia that runs in a north-south direction along the south edge of his home, parallel to Woodruff down to Ridgeview, and he indicated there is an existing fence along the rear of his property, a white picket or stockade fence, and the intent is to then continue that fence around what would be a new pool area. I believe I captured everything, just.
Yeah, I guess.
I don't know if that picks up on the record.
And there are other pictures, Shannon, of the various pictures of the backyard that will show the stockade, so looking to the, I guess, the left, yeah, so there's the stockade, but we're going to put a black pool height, what would you call it, a post-type?
Picket, yeah.
Picket, yeah.
An ornamental, a black, so the black ornamental fence.
Yes, black ornamental fence, so that's looking, I guess, north, and then there's more pictures, let's see. Okay, oops, yeah, you go back one. This is looking towards Ridgeview, so Woodruff is what you see to the right, that standard persythia going to the left, that's all along Ridgeview, and then that piece there is that second row of persythia in the front of the house, and the pool would be behind that.
So the pool's behind this, so that's the second row of?
Right.
Of persythia that shows.
Yeah, right there.
There it is.
There.
Yeah, that one.
But it also, it shows here.
Right.
That shows there in the aerial, in that location.
One other question, do you have central air?
Yes. The, if we have to back up, Shannon.
I gotta switch.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
There's a central, exist, that's, I think, well, we probably need to replace it, it's over 20 years old, that's been there, we bought the house in 2017, and the, that's been there for, we're only the third owners of the property, so that's been there forever. And that, well, the point is, that would be noise, or is noisier than a pool pump.
Commissioner Carrier, any questions?
So if it, other than the fact that this is a corner lot, this would be 100% with the regulations, is that correct? So it'd be within all the setbacks behind the main rear line of the house, so what we're talking about today is because it's a corner lot, it's got that kind of dual?
Correct, because it has to meet the setback, so, correct, with a, with the pool, it has to be behind the main rear wall of the house, which with this jet-out, some liberties, this, this portion of the house is 38 feet long, this one's 28, so you could call this the main portion, it's the longer portion of the home, that the pool is behind, and yes, Commissioner Carrier, correct, with a corner lot, it has to be behind this rear portion of the home, but it also has to be behind this rear portion of the home, leaving it in the one rear quadrant of the property is the only regulated area allowed by the, by the regulations, correct?
No other questions, so this, what we, if, if approved, what you're approving really is just moving pool a little to the south.
Correct.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
No questions.
Commissioner Marsh?
No questions.
Commissioner Brockman?
They've all been answered for me, no questions.
Commissioner Walsh?
They've all been answered for me as well, too, thank you.
All right, and I just have a couple, and I had the opportunity, Mr. Zakara was kind enough to let me onto his property because it's difficult to see from the road, but it's my understanding that the second row of persythia in the front is remaining, is that?
Oh, yeah, that's staying there.
And most of the persythia around the edge of your property is staying, except for you're making a cut for construction vehicles on Ridgeview.
Correct, and ideally, I mean, one thought was, if they'll do that, I'll have, you know, mark, and I'm going to put, I talked to Bruce there, hay bales on either side of that cut to make sure there's no sediment that goes down Ridgeview, and if, hopefully, Giulianos, I could have them pick their excavator and actually pick up that persythia, move it, and when they're done, and unfortunately, it looks like it's going to be a four-month project because of all of, everyone else who wants a pool and supply chain issues, but they could put, either put those back where they were, we could plant new ones, although, I don't.
I think they grow pretty fast for my personal experience.
Yeah, so, or we just put, I'd say a shadowbox fence in there, but we want to keep that screened, ideally naturally, the way it is now and the way it's been probably for the past, what, 30 years.
And can you address, I mean, most, the objection letter that was sent, is that, that's part of the record, Shannon?
Yes, it is, it was shared, and it's, it is. So it was added to the record, and it is showing here on the screen.
Can you just name the person for the record that submitted it?
Uh, it came in from Maria Miller and John Thomas of 27 Ridgeview Drive, and it was a letter of opposition.
So I'll, I'll just, you know, I'll make a comment, the Miller and Thomas concerns deal with mostly with noise, which is not really within our purview, so I will state, if it exceeds whatever noise, neighborhood, you know, noise disturbance, that's not what we deal with.
Okay.
You, you get a pool, you get a pool, whether you have loud parties or quiet parties, that doesn't address.
Soon to be 69 years old, I don't.
Well, it goes, remember, it runs with the property, not with the owner, right?
Right.
But I was going to ask you, because I had a chance to be at the property, where your property is, is substantially higher elevation-wise than where the Miller Thomas?
Correct.
Property is, so can you just address whether or not they will even see either the pool or the cabana that you're going to construct from there, where they are down?
No.
The right of?
They won't see it at all, because there's, we left, if I can step away from the mic, we left, there was one hardwood tree, Shannon, if you go up.
If you look behind you, that's there, it's there as well, but you need to be within the vision.
Yeah.
That's okay.
In here, there was one hardwood, and I talked to Jen, and after they're on our property, I said, Jen, you have any problems if I cut that down, because I don't want leaves in the pool, and she goes, well, okay, it's on your property, I said, well, no, just let me know, and she said, that's fine, but there's also some, I don't know if there, there's a spruce or cedar here and here on this corner, that's staying, Jen wanted to know if we were going to cut these down, because she thinks they're ugly, and we just said that, oh, that's not something we're looking at right now, but there will block any from the site, you know, into the backyard where that stuff is.
Okay.
And there, very tall and mature.
All right, did the microphone pick up everything?
I, there's no way for me to know, so I'll just simply reiterate that the, I won't know until we listen to the recording, and it's, so, Mr. Zakara indicated that there was a hardwood tree located in this area that the neighbor at 28 was agreeable to removing, so leaves don't end up in the pool. The evergreen tree located at the back along the shared rear property line is remaining, and at the moment, these evergreen trees at the southeast corner are remaining and are, appear to be in the line of sight of 27 Ridgeview.
Any other commissioner have a question at this point? And we've received the letter in objection, but does anyone here wish to, or even here or remotely wish to speak in favor of the application?
If anyone has called in that wishes to speak in favor of the application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and you will be acknowledged to address the board. Likewise, if there's anyone in the room, you can come to the podium and state your concerns and address the, the board. I'm not seeing anyone with a hand raised, no one has used a chat function or questioned the answer to, to alert us of their desire to address the board.
And Mr. Zakara, I did have one last question, the cabana, the 12 by 16 cabana, that is currently, that is within the setback, so it doesn't require?
It's at least 11 feet from the property line, and I looked, and it's minimum five feet, I think, for a, a structure, and it's going to be 192 square feet, 12 by 16.
Right.
And there's a rendering of that there if you want to see it as well, but it's just a hip roof, open building, and the corner, there's the fence, the corner, there's, the back corners, we're going to extend all the way up so we can maybe hang a TV in it, just to have some storage for pool stuff, but, and we'll have the, the grill, gas grill will be in there, but it's just a place to keep stuff and hang out to get out of the sun, kind of contrary to what you want with the pool, but.
All right, I'm going to close the hearing, thank you very much, and we'll go, yes, Shannon, you did ask for opposite questions.
So anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition of this application, using the Zoom function, you can raise your hand to alert us to address the commission, or again, if you are seated here with us this evening, you are welcome to come to the podium to speak in favor or opposition to this application and address the board.
And you can have a seat, Mr. Zakara.
Thank you.
So we're going to go right to deliberations, so the hearing is closed, I will entertain a motion with regard to the application at 80 Woodruff Road.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for variance to locate pool, and other than the required yard at 80 Woodruff Road, our 20 zone.
Second.
That was Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussion? Would someone like to at least articulate the basis for the variance that it, so it meets statutory requirements?
So this is the corner lot thing we deal with all the time, with the two front yards that doesn't exist in many towns, or it does in Farmington, I deal with it myself, I've dealt with it myself, I've been denied before myself, so I know it well, so the, other than the fact that this is a corner lot, this would meet every other regulation, so I feel that it meets it necessary.
And I'll say that it's, it's the best location for this, for this particular pool on this lot being a corner lot, it would, it would constitute a hardship to try and put it behind the house because of how, the proximity to the back of the house and the neighboring property, and I don't think will affect the contours or the character of the neighborhood, so I'm, just note that for the record as well. So I'll call the question and ask that, Shannon, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Callahan?
Aye.
Carrier?
Aye.
Llewellyn?
Aye.
Brockman?
Aye.
Marsh?
Aye.
Sorry, sorry, Walsh?
Aye.
And Chair Schoenhorn?
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, your application has been approved, there will be procedures through the town, they'll be, either, they'll be in touch, you should be in touch with them before the final approval is signed and presented to you, okay? So next, we're going to 6 Carrington Lane, and I'm going to ask that the person who is presenting to identify themselves for the record, give their address, and just indicate a relationship to the applicant.
Good evening, appreciate your time, thank you for your service, my name is Brian Haran, my wife Crystal Han, Haran, we applied for the variance on the grounds that we are the homeowners at 6 Carrington Lane. I also just wanted to say thank you to Sharon and Sandy, I don't think we could have got through this process without your help, we had no idea what we were getting into, but we're excited to be back in town. I grew up here, graduated in '02, and a lot of great memories, 19 years later, we had the opportunity to raise our family here, so we're beyond excited to, to be back. We, that looks like our lot, we're applying for a variance to reduce our rear setback from, I believe, 25 feet to somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 to 13. The proposal that you have in front of you today is an 8 by 12 bump out that'll be on the existing deck that's in the rear. that'll be on the existing deck that's in the rear of our home. We did meet with the wetlands commission. They did approve pending your approval. They then laughed and said, good luck, so here we are tonight. There's a little bit of a presentation up there that I, I know was submitted that we can click through, but as you see there, there's the, the rear of our house and where the cursor is. It appears there already is a very small bump out to the existing house. We would propose that the bump out would go all the way out to the face of the deck, and then it would be a two story bump out that would go up to provide an additional workspace off of what is the master bedroom. So this is just an elevation of, you know, currently what's there. And then I think the next slide is, you know, what we would propose, that it would look like all the construction materials would, would be the same that's on the current house, paint color, et cetera. That's the current floor plan, so it would be going off the kitchen right there, and then that would be the proposal. So there would be a pass through, you know, on the deck down to that other patio area that's existing off the back of the garage. Is that the bedroom? I'm not sure we've, we're still living with my parents, so I haven't spent a lot of time in the, in the house until we get through this. That is the master bedroom, and that would be the additional workspace off, off the top there. So we're applying for this variance. As you can see where it's set, we don't really believe that it will be any impact to the streetscape or the integrity of the historic district that we are a member of now. We also feel that it's the least invasive place to do this addition. We did speak with most of our boundary neighbors and shared some of these plans even prior to sending out the, you know, the certified mail notices, and we didn't receive any objection. We actually got two, you know, letters of support via email that I can submit if needed. But I think as we go forward, we really want to.
I, I would note that if we hadn't submitted it by the time at the end of this hearing, we can't consider it, so.
I could submit them now then, if that's acceptable?
Yes.
It is. You want to just hand them, if you have paper copies, you want to hand them?
I do, yes.
Secretary, that would be. We do have the photographs, so I say, but yes. And Shannon, for the record, could you just identify who these letters are from, the names?
Yes, so the first one is from Vince Tully. It says their address is five Carrington. And I'm trying to, we got your certified letter. Terry and I have no issue with what you are planning to do, and we can think of no reason why anyone else would object to it. If you'd like us to write a letter to that, a factor, if you need someone to speak in favor, we'd be happy to do so. I can't imagine you're meeting any, any resistance. I'm just paraphrasing. So again, this is from Vince Tully at five Carrington. And the second one is from Bobby and Peter Bartucca at four Carrington.
Yeah, we share a driveway with.
It says, hello, we're back home. Good luck with your plan for the house. Based on the drawing, we have no objection. Good luck with the project.
Okay, thank you. We'll make that part of the record.
Thank you, sir.
Right. Anything else that you wanted to share with us?
I think everything else is, is kind of included with the application, certainly open to answer any questions that you may have. Oh yeah, I was kind of anticipating that, that question. I guess just in, in terms to what I anticipated was going to be asked with regards to potential hardship, but if you do look at our property, our, our neighbors are the wetlands kind of wrap around our property, so if you can see kind of where our house is set, it's, it's near the rear of the property because there's substantial wetlands in the front into the side and then to the back, so we were limited with where we felt we could go out with this bump out. Was one of the big reasons why we landed where we did.
And, and as Matt, you get, if you want to speak to Ms. Haran, you have to come to a microphone.
You're welcome to.
You can talk to, you don't have to just rely.
My wife, Crystal.
Well, just pointing out that it's also attached to the part of the home where we can leave the space, so from a functionality point of view, the lot limits us, but this is also ideally where we need space.
And I just wanted to note before I turn it over to the other commissioners that I appreciate that you sent winter pictures because I went out there this week, this weekend, and I didn't go up your driveway, but I tried to see the back of your property, including going to the land trust property, which is not mowed, so you can't even get close enough to see it, so especially after all the rain we've had. I understand about your wetlands being surrounding this, this house, so.
Our daughter wanted to know if there were going to be ducks that were going to be living in our pond.
Yes, and, and it was so, there was so much foliage that it was very difficult even to see. Tried taking a picture and it, it was mostly of a, kind of a trellis of vines that's closer to the road.
It is a beautiful property where we're.
All right, so is there anything else you want to say? I don't want to cut you off before I turn to the commissioners for questioning.
I think that's it.
All right, Commissioner Callahan?
My questions have been answered.
Commissioner Carrier?
No questions.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
No questions, sir.
Commissioner Marsh?
No questions.
Commissioner Brockelman?
Mine was going to be, what was your hardship, but you answered that there with the wetlands, so.
Thank you.
No questions.
I was anticipating that question.
Commissioner Walsh?
No questions.
And I, I made my comments. I don't actually have any other questions. There is, you're surrounded by wetlands, as I understand it, and there's, therefore, there would be no other place other than in your driveway, which is shared, to add on to that house. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I have no other questions. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? I'll combine it either, is anyone present wish to speak in favor or in objection to the application? If not, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application?
Again, if you're online, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature and you'll be acknowledged to address the board. And Mr. Chair, I'm not seeing, there are no hands raised, there are no comments in the chat or the Q and A indicating anyone has anything for the board.
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing and turn to discussion. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
You don't have to stand there. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the application of Brian and Crystal Haran for a variance to reduce the rear yard setback from twenty five feet to twelve feet for an eight foot by twelve foot addition to the rear of the home located at six Carrington Lane, R twenty cluster zone.
Is there a second?
Second.
Right, I think Mr. Brockelman was, was quicker, so we'll have him be the second. All right, discussion. I will just state, having gone out there, tried to see the, the, the back of the, the yard, at least in the, in the warmer weather, it is very much secluded, so it would, it certainly is a hardship. I saw how wet it was. And just from the topography of the land, I could see that basically was the only reasonable place to put an addition of any sort. The neighbor with whom you share driveway does not object, and I wasn't, when I do a site examination, I don't go into people's backyards without permission. I didn't want to walk up your, you have a one driveway, you're the second, you're the rear lot of the shared driveway, so. And the other side is the, is the land trust property. It's a beautiful open space there. I hope there are bluebirds in those boxes that I saw on that property there, but I feel that the nature of your property and its both its topography and its configuration are sufficient to show a hardship, and as long as inland wetlands is not found that it's going to impact on there in, in, in the wetlands, I think that it meets the standards under the statute, so I'll just say that for the record. Anyone else wish to comment? Online, Mr. Llewellyn or Commissioner Walsh, do you wish to say anything?
No, sir. Questions are answered.
No, sir, thank you.
All right, so I'll call the question, and it'll be a roll call.
Okay, Commissioner Callahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Carrier?
Aye.
Llewellyn? Commissioner Llewellyn?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Brockelman?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
And Chair Shonhorn?
Aye. Congratulations. Good luck with that, and you'll hear from the town and they'll give you your papers and whatnot that you need to be able to proceed, so.
Good luck.
Luck. Could I just have a moment? Oh, of course, yeah. Okay, yeah. Because the Commissioner Llewellyn is present, I usually would alternate the alternates, so for the next hearing, I'm going to have Commissioner Marsh up here for Commissioner Nadeem, and Mr. Brockelman will sit this one out, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next matter on the agenda is seven five one New Britain Avenue. I would ask that the person who speaks, state your name, approach the podium, name, address, and relationship to the applicant, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Karnuk. I am the property owner at seven fifty one New Britain Avenue and the applicant for the variance. So I am, I'm seeking to build a barn there to want to eliminate sort of old and deteriorated shed that is back there. But I have boats, I have a number of vehicles, trailers, good amount of woodworking tools. I, I like to do some woodworking, but I can't really set up a place to do that right now. My garage is overly full with personal effects, and I would like a place to put my boat, get it out of the weather. I'm going to have a trailer sitting in my backyard, a car hauler. I'd like to get that in, out of the elements and be able to use my garage to park vehicles as opposed to store my personal belongings.
All right. Commissioner Callahan? Before you do that, could you just articulate for us what your hardship is?
Lack of ability to adequately store personal belongings that I have that are being left exposed to the elements that would have a much greater longevity if they were stored under shelter.
Okay, Commissioner Callahan?
And this is a question, as I understand it, and this is part of questions, maybe more a question for Shannon. Without a variance, the applicant could build an accessory building up to nine hundred square feet?
Correct, and.
And this building is how many square feet?
So this, so, correct, the maximum allowable nonhabitable space is nine hundred square feet total for his home. There's an existing five hundred and seventy five square foot garage, and the configuration, as it's shown up on the screen, the garage is actually detached, it's not attached to the home.
Okay, and I'm seeing on the legal, the, the proposal is a structure of thirty two by sixty feet?
So it's.
Nineteen hundred and twenty square feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's a three bay detached garage?
Correct.
Okay, and is, is the, is the building that you're proposing to be separately constructed, or is it a prefab structure?
So it's probably going to be separately constructed. I think more likely than not, I'm going to go pole barn. I mean, it, it depends obviously on the variance. You know, I could do a kit for a metal structure, steel frame, but I think I would likely go pole barn. And if there is a preference from the commission, I'm certainly open to that.
All right, and I did do an inspection. You mentioned a boat and a trailer. There's a boat in front of the garage?
Correct.
And I take it that I couldn't see, but there, there was a garage door that was partially open, but what you're saying is the garage is full of stuff?
Full of stuff, full of stuff, and that actually itself will flood occasionally. It did in fact Saturday night, you know, I had two inches, three inches of water in there. And that's just from the runoff from the driveway.
And have you discussed either your variance application or the size of the structure that you're proposing with any of the neighbors?
I have, with three of my neighbors, and the ones that I have had verbal conversation with, they're all in support of it.
Have you received any letters, either in opposition or in support of your application?
I have not.
And what's the proposed?
Not to my knowledge, but if there is, there, there may be.
What's the proposed height of this structure?
At the ridge, I, I proposed sixteen. So it would be an average height of fifteen feet.
I don't have any more questions.
Commissioner Carrier?
Can you restate that? The ridge, you said, is that sixteen feet?
Yeah, so at its, at its apex, it would be, it, it's tallest point would be sixteen feet, and down at the eve would be fourteen, so.
So it meets the fifteen foot?
On, on the average, it would be a fifteen foot height.
From the grid.
Any other?
The, can you restate how many square feet are in the house?
So finished basement, my understanding, I cannot count finished basement as living space for these purposes, for the variance.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so eleven hundred and fifty square feet.
And then, did I read in here that you were looking to take out an existing shed or the existing garage as part of this?
Yeah, there, there's a pretty significantly, that, that's a pretty deteriorated shed right there, was, you know, I inherited it with the property. So that would be removed, and then the barn put there, subsequently a garden to the south side of the barn is our intentions.
And that's not part of the five seventy five detached garage? That's, that's separate than that, right?
Correct, because the garage is here located in proximity to the home, and the shed was located towards the rear of the property. You're seeing just a very small portion of it under the trees at the back of the property.
Yeah, I mean, that.
That would be removed, and then.
Yeah, those trees have already been removed, I think, in the, in the image that I gave the footprint on, you can see a little more clearly.
No other questions. Commissioner Llewellyn?
How are you, how are you going to access that?
So I have a ten foot, five inch wide gate to the north of the house, the north side of the house. And if you see, there's a, there's a trailer back there now. In the wintertime, I put my boat in the backyard typically. So that wouldn't change, there would be no change there. That access that is currently in use would remain the access.
So the access is coming through the front yard?
Yes, right through the, through the side yard, yes.
Okay, no further questions.
Commissioner Marsh?
No questions.
Mr. Brockelman?
I'm quite familiar, I live down the road, so I'm quite, quite familiar with this property, and yes, you do have quite a bit of stuff out front, and I can understand the elevation, where you're getting some water in your garage. Could you just, I mean, is, is this structure going to, can you show where, or maybe I just missed it, where on the property it's going to be?
You can't speak while you're not near a microphone, so just point to it and then go to a microphone.
Okay, so you basically pointed to taking over where the existing shed is then? Okay. Yep, yep, okay. No further questions from me.
Commissioner Walsh?
I might have missed it. How big is the, the existing shed that you're taking down compared to where you're putting up?
It's, well, it seems to have been built in stages, the existing shed. I think originally it was like a ten by twelve, and then there seems to be another ten by. and then there seems to be another 10 by 10 section that was sort of makeshift added on to it.
So how big is it now?
10 by 22?
Yeah, 10 by 22.
Okay, thank you. No more questions. All right, I, I have a few. If you didn't have a lot of equipment to store, what would be your hardship for needing this shed? Or garage, rather?
I mean, I, I think that that, that is predominantly my hardship and, and to be completely candid, that, that is my hardship. I would like to get that stuff into shelter. I actually also have other vehicles that I don't even keep on my property because I don't really have anywhere to store them.
And I ask that question because you understand that if we approve this, this runs with the land. So if you were to move and the next person doesn't have any of this recreational equipment or extra cars and whatnot, it, it stays, it doesn't come down after you leave.
Understood.
Could you also just articulate for us how this water would not affect the neighborhood? As I go down the street, obviously I was shocked to see the house that had burned down.
Yeah.
Few houses down, but it seems that the way this neighborhood was built, you've got a colonial, then a ranch, then a colonial and a ranch. It seems to be alternating in that area. There's, I guess, two ranches next to each other and then there's one modern. I don't know what you'd call that style with the flat, with the the 45-degree roof. There's a house further
More of a Cape-style home?
I forget what that's style is called.
The yellow one?
Yeah. Yeah, it's got a really long, it's like a more post-modern style.
Across from Polymer.
The salt box?
Yeah, yeah.
Salt box.
Salt box?
Yeah, the salt box, that's what it is. So other than that, but, so everything else seems to be like, you know, alternating.
Oh, across from Roma? Yeah, okay.
So I'm just, can you just explain how this water would not change the neighborhood? Is there anyone else that has a, a large, a 2,000, almost 2,000 square foot garage anywhere along that section that's not a commercial property?
Not to my knowledge. There is not, I have not seen one. There's none visible to me from my property. I do think that there is not a tremendous lot of consistency in the style of home on that street. I think there's a tremendous variance in, in home style. So I don't, I don't think that really affects the neighborhood aesthetically. I do think it's far enough removed from the house, it's far enough set back from the road that, you know, as you, as you drive through the neighborhood, I don't think it's something that's gonna stand out as an eyesore. It's not gonna really catch you. You're gonna have to kind of be peering into the backyard as you're cruising by at 40 miles an hour to notice it. And it will be, it will be almost 200 feet removed from the road.
Shannon, can you measure that just to confirm?
Uh, yeah.
In fact, I, I think it may be 202 feet removed from the, from the road.
And behind your, your house while she's measuring that, is that the, where the rail?
It's the Farmington River. So if you know the, the footbridge that crosses over the Farmington River, that's, that's probably 500 feet directly behind my fence, behind my property.
When you say footbridge, you mean the rail trail bridge?
Yes, yes.
Just for, for visual, so this is, this is the property in question, 751. This is town open space and then that's the bridge over the river that was just referenced. And for a rough measurement, if I stool bar is always in the wrong spot. From the back of the house to the property line is 180. And so from the street to the back property line, it's 260. So it's
260 minus 32 minus 5, or a little bit more?
I, I was gonna go 10.
10.
So I, I think it works out to be just about, from, from the curb, I think it's 202 feet.
I eyeballed it and got 199, so.
Okay.
It's perfect.
Thank you.
All right, I don't have any other questions, thank you. Any, any other commissioner wish to ask any further questions before we open it up to the public?
You, you mentioned that you have woodworking tools. Is this part of any kind of business or?
It is not part of my business. I am a business owner. We do have office space in town, in fact, on New Britain Avenue, a couple miles down the street at Route 6. So I, the, the business itself is run out of a commercial space.
And the, so the woodworking is, is purely a hobby?
That's a hobby for me, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak in favor, or let's start with in favor of the applicant?
Well, you got, yes, so you come up, so, Mr. Karnak, if you could step away from the podium.
I'm gonna ask you to state your name. You can pull the microphone down towards your face.
My name's Yumek Lenowski. I live two houses down to his, but
Could you state your address, please?
727, 727 New Britain Avenue.
Okay.
Farmington. I live two houses down to his. So I go back to yard, I'm gonna see the humongous garage. It's not like little tiny, it's, it's a big. I go my backyard, I know, that's all I'm gonna face. That's a too big.
Okay, and you're sa, on the same side of the street?
Yeah, same time.
And is your backyard, does it also slope down towards the woods and the river?
Yeah, rivers, yeah. Yeah, so.
Is there anything else you wish to say?
You know, I go out, I'm gonna, that's a huge.
Okay, so So I understand what you're, you're speaking in opposition to this application. Is that what you're saying? Okay. Does anyone then wish to speak either in favor, are, do, is there anything else you want to add? I don't wanna
That's all I wanted, because it, it's kind of, it's gonna be a little bit too big because you go out, obviously you're not gonna miss them because nothing, no tree, no nothing between the line, you know, our property line, so you, I won't see him. But if you build a little bit, you know, lower and it's, you know, somewhere a good side, then you won't be like the eyesore.
But does any commissioner want to ask a question of, I'm sorry, what was your last name again?
Lenowski.
Lenowski? Anybody have any questions for Ms. Lenowski? Online, Commissioners Walsh or Llewellyn?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Oh, Mr. Carrier?
The, with the boats and the other stuff that's there now, do you find that to be too much?
The boat?
Or the trailer?
Just, I mean, because you go out, that's all you see. We try to put our junk the, the shed or something, but that, that's kind of a little bit too big. Put on, you know, that, he gonna build a garage, it's gonna be big in his house.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other one else have a question?
No.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak either in favor or in opposition to the application online?
So we do have a hand raised. So, Mr. Soders, if you want to go ahead and unmute your microphone, you can address the board.
And you need to state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is William Soders. The address is 735 New Britain Avenue. And I, I guess my primary comment is I have a lot of similar interests and hobbies that occupy space, so I'm not at all opposed to a reasonable attempt to address that. That's probably hard to define what's reasonable. But I just feel this structure is, does not fit in with the neighborhood. Just in its sheer size, and it's hard to judge even the design with the drawings I saw. It's hard to judge how it would actually appear. I did hear discussion of possibly a pole, pole barn. My personal opinion is it doesn't fit in this neighborhood. It needs to be something more reasonable in size and more similar to what is already here. You know, I always, I always thought of having this opportunity to request a variance as a way to address maybe a slight issue with me being able to comply with the zoning requirements. This is by no means trying to get an approval for something that slightly can't meet the requirements. This is kind of blowing it out of the water, in my opinion, and I think is not reasonable.
Does, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Soder on the, on the commission?
No.
So, Mr. Callahan, Mr. Carrier?
No questions.
Mr. Llewellyn?
No, sir.
Mr. Marsh?
No.
Mr. Brockelman?
No questions.
Mr. Walsh?
No questions.
And I, I just have one. Mr. Soder, is your property to, to the east or west of this property, as you're facing it, are you to the left or the right?
It's to the left as you're facing his property. So yeah, you're pointing, it's being pointed at now.
Okay, that's your property there, so you also walk up to the town open space down to the river?
Correct, yes. But I will also say, I guess the other comment I would make is that I have a clear view across the back of the properties. And I guess the other comment I would make is that there's a new occupant in 743, which is the property between myself and 751. And she, she did, the prior occupant who just sold the house, maybe about six months ago, had a lot of hobbies also and had trucks parked in the backyard and whatnot. And, you know, it's, again, it's just not in line with this neighborhood. You know, clutter like that needs to find someplace else. I just don't think it's appropriate. I mean, you can, what you see in the, in the view you're looking at right now is exactly what our garden looks like all the time and we occupy it part-time. But it's immaculate and there's not stuff all over the place and we don't have huge buildings, outbuildings and whatnot. That's, that's how we would expect a neighborhood like this to stay. This property has been in my wife's family since it was built in 1966.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to talk.
Quite welcome. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Is there anyone else online that's?
Again, is there anyone else online that wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application? Please raise your hand so that you can be acknowledged to address the commission. There's no other hands raised. I do, I just want to note for the record, we received a a general email, I suppose, from a Francis St. Pierre. Says, "I'm in support of all four applications for variances in Farmington at the July 19th zoning Board of Appeals meeting." I'm assuming that was in reference to the legal, the legal notice had for, there's no other information.
There's no address for that individual?
There's no, there was none given and I didn't look, Sandy, did you happen to? She lives a couple houses away from this applicant, but I don't, there is no address given and there is no address indicated. There's nothing specific for any of the applications.
All right, thank you. We'll make that part of the record. And hearing with that, we'll now close the hearing and go to discussion and deliberation. Let's start with entertaining a motion with regard to this application. I will just remind the board that in order to discuss a matter, we have to have a motion and seconded regardless of how we may end up voting on. In the affirmative, correct?
Motion to approve the application of David Karnak for a variance to exceed the maximum area of 75% to 220% of the habitable area of the principal dwelling for a construction of 32-foot by 60-foot garage and for a height variance in excess of 15 feet for the property located at 751 New Britain Avenue R20 zone.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, Mr. Carrier? All right, discussion, and I think we just should go through and see if anyone, Mr. Callahan, it's your motion. Do you want to speak?
It's my motion, but I have grave concerns and I have no problem with putting shed and stuff if, if it varies to some degree, but this is, I mean, it's gonna dwarf the house. So I, I think it's just, it's a bit too much for this neighborhood and this property.
Mr. Carrier?
I share the same concerns as a guy who really loves garage space. I would love to have something this big. You know, I'm a business owner, I understand storage, I have a house. Not enough place for my foilers, you name it, pedal bikes, the generators, all the stuff that would go with it, the woodworking shop I would have. That being said, I, you know, two things. I'm concerned about the size because it is a great deal bigger than anything else in the neighborhood. But I'm also struggling with the hardship part of it and I'm sitting here saying, you know, kind of playing back and forth in my head during this application of, you know, what would be reasonable and what's not, but neither any size would say what is the hardship or not. I do understand they have to go to planning and zoning to get a separate approval for the over 700 square feet for a single structure. So I'm, I'm kind of wrestling with both of those at this point.
Mr. Marsh?
Yeah. I basically have exactly the same two things that, that you have. The size is so out of proportion. I mean, you could live in there. And also the hardship. I, you know, I have a lot of, I'm a photographer. I do a lot of pictures. Hey, I have three printers in my office. I wish the heck I could have more space. But it's not a hardship because I make it work.
And, wait, let me just finish with Commissioner Walsh and then I'm gonna come and we'll go one more round. Commissioner Walsh?
Yes, sir. I did not get the, voice my opinion.
Oh, that's Mr. Commissioner Llewellyn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, you're absolutely right. Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you. I don't think it fits with the character of the neighborhood. I'm concerned about the access from the side of the house back. I don't know how you're gonna make that work. But let's see what happens.
All right. Anything else? I apologize for skipping you. I'm looking at your name on my list here and so I'm very sorry. Anything else?
No offense taken.
All right, Commissioner Walsh? And I didn't touch this, you know, not part of the deliberation, so. Mr. Walsh?
Commissioner Walsh, you have to unmute your microphone.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I have the same concerns as everybody else.
Thank you.
And, and as chair, I, I go last, so I just want to say, I want to say this. I understand your concern. We have like statutory requirements that have to be met for our approving any variance. And one of those is that the hardship has to be something that's unique to the land, not to the individual. So when I asked you to articulate other than that you needed someplace to store your items, as a matter of, of law, we're not allowed really to consider your, you know, it's more than hobbies. You have a lot of, of, of vehicles and other items that should be stored, no question about it. But unfortunately, aside from the fact that you've had some objection from your neighbors, you also have to remember that your property fits within a neighborhood. And the other thing we have to consider is whether it might alter the character of that neighborhood. And as you look at the GPS satellite image that's behind, yeah. You see all the houses are close to New Britain Avenue. They all back up to the woods. You see all the houses are close to New Britton Avenue, they all back up to the woods. So you have this, this benefit of having a protected private area, but you also have neighbors on either side of you going down quite a ways that can see into your backyard. So my concern is twofold, one is the reason you gave doesn't meet our legal definition for a hardship. That doesn't mean you couldn't come back with a smaller structure that might meet within those needs. Two, it changes, I think, it changes the character of the neighborhood. And that's how I feel and why I can't support your application. Um, the third thing is, and I think one of the commissioners here, I can't remember which one um indicated um on as part of their comments, this isn't just a, oh no, it was one of the the commenters, one of your neighbors there. A variance means, you know, you have, where we live within certain rules and regulations that town go under. And then sometimes because of the con- the configuration of your property, you need to change it a little. This dwarfs your house, this is, you could put your house in, I think you put two of your houses in this structure. So it's, even though you, part of your neighborhood is commercial, this is a residential neighborhood. And maybe, I don't know how Farmington may develop or New Britton Avenue may develop in the future. But I'm afraid that I could not support this application because of those things that I stated. Having said that, I'm going to um ask the the, Shannon, the staff to call.
Before you do, John, I think there's a couple more comments, I, I was chatting down, I want to get to everybody.
Okay.
Um, this is a variance to a regulation that I was opposed to when this passed like seven, eight years ago for this reason. I have two family members that live in town that have garages, they're two feet smaller, thirty by sixty. Um, they're on larger lots, they're on back lots, doesn't, there's no character of the neighborhood issues. Their houses are larger. So this gentleman has a more modest house and therefore is penalized on the garage space compared to other people, not taking into account the amount of land that's there. And that's the part that I knew is going to be kind of the rabbit hole. And understanding some of the reasons that went behind that boat some time ago and and I testified it along with another architect in town uh was, you know, this and and also the regulation of increasing your house too big compared to your neighbor and things like that. Because you get into the what haves and because the house is smaller, so if he came back tomorrow and blasted the roof off his house and added twelve hundred square feet, all of a sudden his garage could be bigger, maybe not this big. And that's the problem that I have with it. And some of the houses on that road are much larger than this gentleman's house. Now, our hands are tied because we're sticking to a regulation that's in writing and, you know, we have to have a hardship to it. But this is the problem that comes down when you make these types of things. Now, it replaced an issue of like three car garages versus not three, if it was in the past, you couldn't have more than three or you needed a variance. This at least made it a size requirement. Um, but again, I'll state finally like penalizing for being more modest on the house and having more garage space. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there that this is the kind of stuff that we run.
All right, so anybody else want to comment before I put it to a roll call? Okay, Shannon, would you please call the roll?
Sure, and just a reminder that the motion was in the affirmative, so a yes is an approval and a no is um against the motion. So Commissioner Callahan?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Carrier?
No.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Marsh?
No.
Commissioner Walsh?
No.
And Chair Schoenhorn?
No, I'm sorry, the application has failed. Okay. So um, at least on the agenda. You know, we had originally decided we might talk about the changes in statutes and the zoning, but it's getting late, we're not going to do that tonight. So it's not on the agenda, so I would ask for a motion on the approval of last month's minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the June meeting.
Second. All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that passes and I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. So before we actually, before we vote on that, though, we'll take the motion from Commissioner Carrier in a second, we have a second.
Second.
All right, um, are there any applications, we have to call a special meeting, we don't meet in August. But are there any applications because of last year, nothing happened because of the pandemic or very little did? So are we going to need, do you think, a special meeting in August or not?
At this point, no, sir, there's no, I'm not aware of any other applications that are in and um typically we aren't making an exception um unless there was an error, like in this case, you know, there had been a minor error on a, on, I'll say our end on the notification, that if it warranted, then yes, we would try to accommodate when it's an error that's not a, you know, the issue with the applicant. But in in this case, we would probably just wait till September unless there was some unusual circumstance and then I'll reach out to to everyone, but.
For the record, I'm blaming the error on the Hartford Current.
Hope you better.
All right, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great summer.
All right.